Members, time is up, so we will resume. And for this session, this is about the Constitutional and Mainland Affairs. I would like to welcome the Secretary for Constitutional and Mainland Affairs as well as his colleagues. I'll invite the Secretary to speak. And then, members who would like to ask questions, please press the button, request to speak. Thank you. Our brief members on the main points of the estimates of expenditure of the Constitutional Mainland Affairs Bureau in 2020-21. In this year, the CMAB is allocated $845.7 million. The focus of work for this financial year is as follows. First, electoral arrangements. In preparation for the seventh term legislature general election to be held this year, the government will continue to work closely with the Electoral Affairs Commission, EAC, to ensure that the election will be conducted in a fair, open, and honest manner in accordance with the relevant legislation. The EAC is conducting a 30-day public consultation on the proposed guidelines on election-related activities in respect of the Legislative Council election and plans to issue the finalized guidelines in mid-June. The 2020 photo-registration campaign has commenced in late February. Other persons who have yet to register as electors are encouraged to register by the statutory deadline of the 2nd of May. To celebrate the 30th anniversary of the promulgation of Basic Law and to enhance promotion of an education on the Constitution of Basic Law, our bureau will set aside about $23 million in 2020-21 for organizing or sponsoring first types of promotional activities through various means to enable the public to have a more comprehensive and full understanding of the One Country, Two Systems principle, the Constitution and Basic Law. In 2020-21, subventions to the Equal Opportunities Commission, EOC, and the Office of the Privacy Commissioner for Personal Data, PCPT, who will remain the major parts of the estimated total provision in human rights of the bureau will continue to carry out work in various areas. The EOC responsible for implementation of four anti-discrimination ordinances. The total subvention for EOC in 2020-21 is $133.9 million, up by 7.3% compared with the revised estimate of 2019-20. The increase in financial provisions mainly due to additional funding to enhance its work in various aspects, including efforts in the prevention of sexual harassment. PCPT will continue to raise public awareness in protecting and respecting personal data as well as encourage property and private organizations to embrace personal data protection as an essential part of corporate governance. We'll continue to support well PCPT. And the allocation this year is $88.7 million, largely equivalent to revised estimate of 2019-20. We introduced the Discrimination Legislation Misliance Amendments Bill 2018 to the legislature in December 2018 as to implement eight of the recommendations set out in the EOC's submission to the government. On the DLR, they are less complex and controversial. The first committee from the legislature has completed scrutiny. In response to views received in the course of scrutiny, we also formulated legislative amendments to expand the protection afforded under the Sex Discrimination Ordinance in order to outlaw harassment of breastfeeding women. The government has always been committed to promoting equal opportunities for people of different sexual orientations and transgenders. And we have been broadcasting promotional video on different platforms to promote the message of eliminating discrimination. And we are also studying and analyzing the experience of other jurisdictions in tackling discrimination against sexual minorities through administrative and legislative measures. The draft study report has been complied. We plan to establish a communication platform. We are also drawing up a charter on discrimination of sexual minorities in the domain of provision of goods, etc., for voluntary adoption by service providers. In 2020-21, the financial provision for mainland and Taiwan offices is $377.2 million, an increase of around 18.1% as compared with the revised estimate for the previous year, mainly due to additional provision for stepping up promotional efforts and also the retirement of more service servants and changes of personnel in the year and in the operational expenses. Since the occurrence of the coronavirus COVID-19 until 5th of April this year, the mainland officers of our government have received about 2,800 requests for assistance relating to the epidemic, of which more than 90% related to Hubei and around 800 inquiries. The Hong Kong Economic and Trade Office in Wuhan and other mainland offices have been providing practical assistance and support according to the actual circumstances. Some Hong Kong people in Hubei, especially those who have couldn't resist, require medications provided in Hong Kong. We have made arrangements to deliver medications. As of the 5th of April, we made arrangements to deliver medications to 260 of them in Hubei. And the Department of Health has also set up a health hotline in case Hong Kong residents in Hubei are in need of the necessities of supplies. The Wuhan ETO would contact the small districts where they live and the local government for assistance. As arranged, we have also sent the baby formula or we have donated powder to meals to families in need as well. And then, in addition, given the compulsory quarantine measures in Hong Kong, some Hong Kong residents in Guangdong and Fujian are unable to go to Hong Kong to attend for medical consultations or collect medications and then return to mainland on the same day as they had done previously. We introduce a special scheme for delivering prescription medications to Hong Kong residents who are there. As of April 5th, arrangements have been made to deliver medications to more than 4,200 of Hong Kong residents in need. And then, for the leading group for the development of Guangdong-Hongkong-Ha'ou Greater Bay Area chaired by Hang Jing, we have, we know that 24 policy measures have been promulgated to provide greater convenience for Hong Kong people to develop work and reside in mainland cities of the Greater Bay Area and promote the convenience flow of people and goods within the area. We are following up on the relevant, with the relevant ministries and departments. And we also carry out developing publicity work as well. And then, in 2020-21, CMAB will continue to take forward the development of the Greater Bay Area through publicity activities will enhance public awareness on the Greater Bay Area development and the outline development plan and encourage the community to seize opportunities. And I understand that we will facilitate, we will hand out messages about facilitating our residents living on the mainland. That will be the development of Hong Kong-Taiwan relations. We will continue to foster economic trade and cultural exchanges and cooperation between Hong Kong and Taiwan. We have the Hong Kong Economic Trade and Cultural Office in Taiwan will continue for more Hong Kong strings and enhance exchanges between the two places. Five minutes each. Jeremy Tam, Claudia Moe, Dr. K.K. Quak, Helena Wong, Andrew Ben, Vincent Zheng, Yip Kin Yun, Luo Wei Quak, Pauline Chow, Ray Chan, St. W. D., Christopher Jung, and Edi Chu. Jeremy Tam, five minutes. First of all, a minor point of order. Well, I put in a question to ask the CMAB in relation to the failure to give a visa to the head of the office in Hong Kong. That is the Taiwan-Hong Kong Economic and Cultural Cooperation Council. I mentioned for the CMAB, but then it was channeled to another bureau. And it was also revised to say what efforts will be made to encourage exchanges. So it became CDB CIT 158. It's a point of order. How come that my question has been changed in this way? I would defer to the clerk. Chairman, I'm not too sure. Please speak up. Yes, I don't have with me the question that Mr. Jeremy Tam referred to. But generally speaking, when a member submits a question, he can tell us under which head of expenditure it is related to and which bureau will be expected to answer the question. But it all depends on the substance of the question. After the question has been sent to the government, the government will check which head of expenditure is related, that it is related to and which controller should be expected to answer the question. So for the change here, it is a matter of the coordination among bureaus. Well, if you say that I have mixed up the policy bureaus, then it's fine. But then half of my question has been deleted. I haven't been notified. Do they have the power to make such changes? I think next time you better sort of give us a word in advance. But we only got the replies just a day or two ago. I think it's a matter of classification of the questions. No, it's more than that. Half of my question has been deleted, Secretary. We just give replies to questions received by us. Mr. Lau, maybe you can tell us how you sort of distribute the questions. No, the question hasn't been addressed. Who has the power to delete part of my question without notifying me? No one has done so. I think you better let them have the opportunity to answer a question. They haven't got the information with them, so better have it in the form of a written question. Who did so? I don't know who to give the question to. You don't need to be impatient. We haven't get the facts right. I've got the facts with me. We have the first version, second version. I have got them with me. I have handled, I have dealt with your point. If you are not answering my question, I asked them to give a written reply. There's a lack of classification or distribution of the questions. Are you going to answer a question? Yes, of course. My question is about the following. You have been emphasizing the promotion of cooperation and exchanges with Taiwan. But then the year before last, the former director left office. And for the successor, so far, he hasn't been given a visa. Twenty months have already passed. So you have denied him a visa. And in fact, what about the officers stationed in Taiwan representing Hong Kong? Is the post still left vacant and filled? If it is still so, then why don't you just delete the post? Can you not sort of give us an answer, Secretary? Well, I think it's a matter of immigration policy. This is Taipei Economic and Cultural Office. Well, the immigration department will take into account the actual circumstances. Well, I asked this question last time, and you gave the same answer. Actual circumstances. So for 20 months, you're still talking about actual circumstances. But what about our AO? I think we're supposed to send an AO to oversee the Taiwan office. Is it still unfilled? An officer is, we have a person acting the post. For how many months already? How, for how many months has the officer been acting the post? Parliament Secretary. From September 2017, September 2017. What happens is that we'd like to get a person who is appropriate. But then it is to be posed outside Hong Kong. We cannot direct anybody to fill the post. September 2017. How many months have already passed? So more than two years. So you're simply saying that nobody is filling the overseas post and so you will allow it to be unfilled. So do you allow that to happen? That is, the post is not filled for more than two years? For our mainland officers, overseas officers, and Taiwan officers, again, it is the same arrangement. The CSB will take into account the preference of the individual officers. If we haven't got somebody fitting the requirement, then this will be the case. What about other posts? Do you have the same arrangement? That is, it is left unfilled for over two years? We respect the wishes of individual officers and will find the most appropriate candidate. Are you going to severing ties? Are you going to quarrel with Taiwan? They want to send somebody here, you deny the person a visa. And you are not sending anybody over there. So somebody would like to come for over 20 years. So are you severing your friendship with Taiwan? If you would like to laugh out loud, it is a serious place, you better leave the chamber. I'm praising. Well, we need to maintain our decorum here.
Chairman, let me supplement regarding the exchange between Hong Kong and Taiwan, especially on economic trade and cultural exchanges, be it the office or otherwise, we have been making progress. We have ongoing initiatives. But then the Director General can be done away with because it's been so many months. In your opening remarks, you mentioned the frequent exchanges in economic and trade and cultural relations. But then if the post is left vacant since 2017, that means public officers have deep hatred towards Taiwan. How can we facilitate exchange with Taiwan? No government officials would go on duty visits to Taiwan. We have not been able to field a suitable candidate for various reasons. I don't think we can take a broad-brush approach. Why aren't public officers willing to go to Taiwan? And we have the establishment. And under the established mechanism, there should be a suitable candidate to take up this post. It is of course undesirable to leave the post vacant. But under this situation, we need to strive to facilitate exchange on the cultural, trade, and economic front with Taiwan. And we have been stepping up our effort. All right, next question. My time isn't up yet. Why are you taking up my time, Chairman? Didn't I say five minutes? All right, please continue then. Calm down, chill, Chairman. Yes, you calm down too, please, speed up. I'm asking whether you have a plan, whether there is a timetable from the government so that in, say, how many months, you can address the issue of severing ties? It's a bilateral issue. Chairman, about facilitating exchange with Taiwan, we have not ceased any work. And under the established mechanism, we will fill the vacancy. We will continue our effort, but we do not have a timetable. Five minutes, Ms. Claudia Moe.
Chairman, I'd like to follow up on Mr. Jeremy Tam's question. This morning, Mrs. Carrie Lam said it out loud and clear that our civil servants are required to abide by the One Country, Two Systems principle and in particular, One Country meaning One China policy. So here, you say that we will continue to promote exchange and cooperation with Taiwan on the cultural, trade, and economic front?
Secretary, do you think there is a conflict here? Because it seems schizophrenic. I don't understand why there would be a conflict. Why don't you think there is a conflict? Because just on the face of it, there is a conflict. You shouldn't even mention Taiwan because we have one country. I think Ms. Claudia is clearly in the know. And we are very clear about the One China principle. The Hong Kong Special Administrative Region adopts One Country, Two Systems principle. According to the Basic Law, this is implemented. In terms of external affairs, Hong Kong also enjoys high degree of autonomy. All right, Chairman, I'll spare him the answer. So to enhance exchanges and cooperation with other economies is something that is close to our heart, and this is an ongoing effort. I believe Ms. Claudia will support us too. All right, I support you. You mentioned external affairs. Well, it should be internal. This is about internal relations, not external relations. You need to be clear.
... because I got a complaint in English. It's CMAB060. It's a general question about racial bias complaints. And Jeffrey Andrews, a known ethnic minority rights campaigner, has alerted me to the following. The head of the Equal Opportunities Commission spoke on some public occasion on March 21st, the International Day for Elimination of Racial Discrimination. And what did he say? He was generalizing ethnic community in Hong Kong. And he said the following, and I quote. "I know that many families, many families would send their girls back to their home country to get married, something like at the age of 12," unquote. Why is he generalizing our ethnic minority community in Hong Kong in such a manner? Our community in Hong Kong, when it comes to ethnic minorities, does include many other ethnicities, including Filipinos, Nepalese, you name them, right? I would like the bureau chief to comment on the above, whether it's a very inappropriate and probably even practically categorically wrong comment. And it would defeat the purpose of the function of the EOC. Thank you.
Secretary.
Questions. As the honorable...
There's only one question.
The honorable Ms. Mo asked these questions referring to the remarks made by the Chairman of the Equal Opportunities Commission. Without knowing the context, it's not appropriate for me to comment on his remark. I think the best thing is for Ms. Mo to ask the Chairman direct. But it's very clear that for the EOC, it is a statutory organization to implement the four anti-discrimination ordinances and also to promote equal opportunities in the society. Ethnic minorities is an important, you know, group that we attach importance.
No, I didn't need you to regurgitate the principles. If you didn't know what the EOC is up to, then there's something the matter with the operation of your bureau. The EOC comes under you.
Yes, the policy is clear. The organization is fulfilling its statutory duties. And it's for the organizations to be accountable to its work.
You don't even know about the incident by now.
And without knowing the context, I don't think it's appropriate for me to comment on the remarks made by you.
All right, time's up. Dr. K.K. Quak, five minutes. Thank you, Chairman. I think Secretary Nip should change the title of the bureau to kowtowing to the mainland bureau because it was a very simple question put just now. You can just tell us that you have no will of your own, you just do the bidding of the central authorities. So One Country, Two Systems is fake. So if we now understand your bureau to be kowtowing to the mainland internally, then I think we are very clear about your work. I have a question on CMAB011. It's been 22 years since reunification. One Country, Two Systems principle, high degree of autonomy, and Hong Kong people administering Hong Kong. We understand that none of these principles apply anymore. Regarding people's trust in One Country, Two Systems and Hong Kong people administering Hong Kong, we are at a very low point. In particular, we see how the liaison office has been meddling with the affairs. We saw how Mr. Zhang Xiaoming and Wang Zhemin, the directors, got sacked because within their term of office, they were leaders in undermining these principles. Mr. Luo Weiling, the new director, and also Mr. Xia Baolong, the director of Hong Kong Macau Affairs. We understand that according to media reports in February, they had a meeting with the help of some friendly organization under the pretext that they should win the election. And for the upcoming legislature election, the other camp should win the majority so as to have the majority in this council. So how do you interpret this? If the liaison office and the Office of Hong Kong Macau Affairs are blatantly meddling with affairs in Hong Kong? Now about the right of governance, I don't quite understand because under Carrie Lam's administration, the government has never lost its power to govern. And please tell Mr. Luo very clearly. Please make recommendations to him as to how we can truly implement the principles of One Country, Two Systems, Hong Kong people administering Hong Kong, and high degree of autonomy. About the Dr. Quak's interpretation of the One Country, Two Systems principle, etc., I really beg to differ. It's all right, just answer my question. We never see things eye to eye. About the functions and duties of the liaison office, I believe this is provided in the Basic Law. This is established according to the Basic Law. So I believe that it is only fulfilling its duty according to the Basic Law. I seek to be enlightened, which article of the Basic Law states that the liaison office can meddle with internal affairs of Hong Kong? I'm running out of time, please answer me. If you want to cite the Basic Law, I want you to base it on facts. Which article of the Basic Law allows the liaison office to meddle with Hong Kong's election? Well, the Basic Law provides the Office of the Central People's Government set up in Hong Kong and also the liaison office's duties. The details are set out on their website, including meddling with elections, including liaison with the mainland, and promoting exchange with Hong Kong. Next, about Hong Kong's political system, be it the Chief Executive, the Legislative Council, they all form part of our political organ under the principle of One Country, Two Systems. I'm sorry, Secretary, I only have 30 seconds. I cannot allow you to go on. My question is very clear, Secretary. If the liaison office is blatantly meddling with Hong Kong's election, do you think it's appropriate? Just answer me yes or no. Well, Chairman, I was trying to answer him. You have 10 seconds left. The Basic Law provides for the political system in Hong Kong. Under the principle of One Country, Two Systems, elections in Hong Kong are held according to the laws of Hong Kong. The Chief Executive shall be accountable to the Hong Kong SAR. He is also appointed by the CPG. So she should also be accountable to the CPG as well. I direct Ms. Dr. K.K. Quak to discontinue his speech. Please turn off his mic and allow the Secretary to finish his answer. Well, I was saying, Chairman, that we need to understand our political system and this should be implemented according to the articles in the Basic Law. And as for elections in Hong Kong, we have the relevant laws governing that. Dr. Helena Wong, five minutes.
Chairman, I also believe the CMAB should revamp its title. I would say that this bureau is unclear about the mainland affairs and is putting a halt to constitutional development. I asked two questions, 073 and 070. 073 is constitutional development, which is under your purview. I asked your work plan, the answer is in the negative. I asked about constitutional development. You said a right atmosphere should be created first. That means you are just holding hostage to fortune. So basically, you are not implementing universal suffrage and shirting in Articles 45 and 68 of the Basic Law. You have done nothing at all. It's been a few years since 2017, we're in 2020. And you're just sitting on your hands. Are you holding hostage to fortune? And there you say that we're going to celebrate the 30th anniversary of promulgation of the Basic Law. It's been promulgated for 30 years. Have you made any progress on constitutional development? Have we had the universal suffrage 070? I asked about the offices. We have the ETOs in Beijing, Guangdong, Shanghai, Chengdu, Wuhan. And the officers' expenditure ranged from $54 to $90 million. the offices expenditure ranged from fifty-four to ninety million dollars. So for Wuhan E T O, in terms of Wuhan pneumonia and the outbreak of the disease in Wuhan before the lockdown in Wuhan, according to reports, some five million people fled to other cities in the mainland and other cities around the world. My question is about the requests received by the E T O in Wuhan. Well, as of 19th March, you received 2,585 requests for assistance. I believe your staff at E T O in Wuhan worked very hard. When was the first request received? Did the Wuhan E T O report to you and Carrie Lam in time about the epidemic in Wuhan? Or that these five officers, including the Wuhan E T O, had completely no idea about the epidemic in Wuhan and not knowing that the five million people fled to the city?
Secretary, first of all, political development. Well, it is not up to the C M A B to dictate what will be done in relation to political development. I think Dr. Wong would know clearly that the Basic Law spells out clearly what is to be done. It requires the agreement of three parties. Have you tried to promote the consensus among the three? I'm going to say that. Well, the current term of the government has been trying hard to facilitate more understanding between electoral members and the central government. There were two tours, one to the Greater Bay Area, another to Shanghai and Hangzhou. We invited all members to join. For the first one, some members, please don't beat around the bush, you try to blame it on us. I just want to point out that for political development, it is not just one single person or a single policy bureau that can dictate what is to be done. I think you know who well. It requires the central government, the C E, as well as the two-thirds majority of the electoral. We all have to try hard, but we took the first step. We tried to organize exchange opportunities, but we haven't got the corresponding feedback. Well, if you want to have a dialogue involving multi sectors, no political party would oppose it. So can you answer my question? Wuhan E T O, were they aware of the development of the outbreak? For the Wuhan E T O is responsible for exchanges with the Hupe Provincial Government and as well as assisting the Hong Kong residents. What was the, when was the time that they got hold of the first call for assistance? Well, for our colleagues at the Wuhan E T O, they have been remaining in Wuhan all the time. I don't query that. I want to know whether they reported the matter to you in time. They were there and they tried to understand what happened and of course they told us. But please don't expect our officers there to have knowledge of public health. In other words, they were ignorant and they didn't know about the outbreak. Mr. Wong, like us, I think we know on the basis of our knowledge and on the basis of the information we get, we make a report and then we come to our judgment. Just want to remind members that please don't overlap when officers are answering questions, when they speak and vice versa. Please exercise self-discipline. It's difficult for me to intervene. It is not good to have a shouting match. Andrew Wen, C M A B zero seven one. For the case of Chen Tonggai, I want to know whether you just leave it in the hands of a religious leader and so be it. Well, from the answer to the question, I know that we have got the platform, Hong Kong Taiwan Economic and Cultural Cooperation and Promotion Council and the Taiwan-Hong Kong Economic and Cultural Cooperation Council. I want to know if upon the release of Chen Tonggai from the prison, has the Hong Kong government raised the matter to this platform? If you have, what's the progress? If not, why not? I hope Carrie Lam would not sort of forget about the tragedy concerning Pun Yiu Wing. I think, Secretary, please tell us what have you done in relation to your portfolio? Because it's a matter of communication. Let me ask all my questions. I'll be brief. Second question is about program four. Well, this about the functions of the C M A B, protection of human rights, privacy, personal data, family responsibilities, et cetera. Now, it encourages, it promotes public education, awareness, et cetera, et cetera. So very positive. But you go on to say that you will monitor the submission of reports concerning the implementation of five pieces of international conventions or confidence concerning human rights. Well, on the 29th of January this year, chemical weapons like tear gas, et cetera, were used by the police. A reply has been demanded and to be expected in 60 days' time. Now, eighty-eight percent of the citizens have been affected by the tear gas. The government didn't make public the ingredients. It is said that the government has been arbitrarily in using the tear gas. Seven questions have been posed. I want to know, has the government answered the questions? If not, why not? And I would also like to ask this question. Now, please don't think that it is out of proportion for the U N to ask you this question. I think you are trying to drag on and try to think that the matter will be dropped. Well, regarding the homicide case in Taiwan, well, for the C M A B, we have we have the communication platform involving the two councils. Well, if the two councils would like to meet, we can make arrangements and we will sort of notify each other. Hong Kong Taiwan Economic, Cultural and Cooperation and Promotion Council, as well as the Taiwan-Hong Kong Economic and Cultural Cooperation Council. But then they are not engaged in judicial exchanges. So it is not appropriate for them to exchange information about such a case. I think it's been so contradictory. You talked about that communication platform being the one for the homicide case. So that's exactly what I've been asking. Well, for communication, as I have said in my reply, if the people involved would like to have an exchange, then that would be the platform. But then we would not be engaged in the actual exchange. And for this platform to operate, usually as the secretary, as the secretary general, that is our deputy secretary, will be overseeing it, who is at a D three level. Secretary. Well, the two councils form the communication platform. If necessary, we will work through this platform. Our role is that of a facilitator and providing assistance. And then as to the U N human rights report, well, as to the questions posed, asking the Hong Kong S A R government to provide information, well, we have already put together development reply. We are not dodging the questions. For our bureau, we coordinated development policy bureaus and departments to answer the questions raised. In accordance with our mechanism, our reply has been submitted to the Central People's Government. There is the office of the commissioner from the Foreign Affairs Ministry. Can we be given the details? We gave the reply before the deadline. When the U N receives the replies, the information will be uploaded onto the website. Thank you. Vincent Zhang. As to who is unclear, who is modeled, and who is ignorant, I think people know who they are. I have to say that for the Wuhan E T O, the officers there have been doing their utmost to help Hong Kong residents. It is known to all of us. C M A B one one seven. Well, I'm a member of the U C, I have to declare that. I think some new arrivals, they have been discriminated against. Recently, some eateries are saying that in order to fight the epidemic, they are not going to allow mainlanders to go into their restaurants. They have even asked for an I D card to be shown. I think they are just trying to disguise their discrimination. I don't think you can draw a line just because somebody is a mainlander. So my question is, we have been dedicating a lot of resources to the U C. How many such complaints have been received by the U C? Now, the government did give a reply, saying that for mainland visitors and new arrivals, discrimination against such a group of people would not fall under the portfolio of the U C. But then others have come up with a different view. We have got four pieces of discrimination legislation. It seems that none of them can be useful to deal with such discrimination. Would you amend the law so as to cover them as well? Now, we have an international financial center status. If we allow people to put up such a notice to have blatant discrimination, this is not good. Can you not refer to the reply, your number one one seven two? That's the question number. Zero three zero is the reply number. C M A B zero three zero. Well, it is understandable that people are worried and concerned when we have this outbreak in our daily lives. I think we still have to respect each other. We shouldn't have discrimination, we shouldn't be pinpointing each other. The U C is responsible for the implementation of the discrimination legislation. The U C has given replies to queries concerning such scenarios. The U C has explained as to whether anything can be done under the four pieces of anti-discrimination legislation, even if that cannot be done within that context. But then generally speaking, for publicity and public education sake, we still have to do something about it because we want of mutual respect, we want to be inclusive. That's the kind of culture that we advocate. So first of all, if you have got individual cases, we want to know about the context, we want to know about the facts, whether there is any breach of the four pieces of legislation. If so, then we can take action. If not, if it is still something that we need to pay attention to, as it would erode our harmony, then we'll try to see if we can have some public education efforts or we'll try to see whether we need to legislate against it. If necessary, I'm sure we can study the matter and try to see if we can come up with some legislative amendments. Chair, I think in recent years, we have seen all kinds of discrimination. Mainlanders are suffering a serious case of discrimination. But then it is always said that the U C can't do much under the four pieces of legislation. Now, people are saying that just because of the U C's comment, they are not discriminating anybody. Well, Secretary, you need to exhaust all sorts of means to tell Hong Kongers not to do so because it is still a case of discrimination. Well, many shops are closing and many enterprises are closing. Our economy will be hot hit. Can you do more about it? Chair, I agree with the member. Well, we have seen such comments. Since such acts would not be governed by the four pieces of legislation, people may then say that it is not an act of discrimination. But then for new arrivals and mainlanders, since we know that it is not a matter of discrimination on the ground of race. So what I want to say is that we need to rely on publicity and public education. And secondly, if we do need other measures, we need to study what to do about it, including the need to legislate against it.
Ms. Yip Kin Yuen, five minutes. Chairman, I'm referring to C M A B oh nine nine regarding vote rigging in the voter registration cycle. It is a very serious problem. If vote rigging is rampant, it will hamper the impartiality of the election. This question is put by Mr. Elvin Young, and I'd like to have more details. In particular, the Junior Police Officers Association has filed a judicial review on the register of voters and the court has also imposed an injunction to ban the public from having access to the register. Now, in such circumstances, we will have one fewer means to check for vote rigging. So if public scrutiny, public power to scrutiny of scrutiny is undermined, then we rely on the R E O staff to monitor the situation. I see that in 2019, 2020, the expenditure amounted to 152 million dollars. Will that be an increase in the coming year? And according to your, the figures provided, in 2015, 16, quite a large number of problems were found. Some 200 voters got, for this registration got canceled, they were deregistered. And we're talking about a double digit in recent years. In other words, with this means of checking taken away, will the effort of combating vote rigging be undermined? Secretary. To answer Ms. Yip's question, the registration in the electoral office of the R E O will work in accordance with the relevant laws. And in terms of voter registration, the most important thing is to have complete and accurate The R E O has a number of measures and it also has a mechanism to conduct checks and to verify the accuracy of information provided. Well, I think members may also be aware of this. So we do uphold the rules very stringently. Despite the drop in the figure, it may not truly reflect the situation because after implementing some measures, when we verify the particulars of electors, for example, we have implemented a measure under which an elector would be required to provide proof of address for applying for change of address. And this will also lead to electors being removed from the register. I'm sorry, I missed one of your questions. Yes, P S. Well, one important procedure in the V R matters is to check and verify the particulars of electors. This has been done as a larger scale exercise in each cycle. First of all, we issue verification letters abiding by certain principles. Say, in the last election cycle after mailing the poll card, if the mail is returned with the recipient unverified, we would definitely follow up on these matters. For problematic addresses, again, we will follow up on them as well. And according to the planning department's information, if the whole building or the whole area now vacant, we will also follow up on these cases. And this amounts to 100,000 cases. In fact, we have a statutory checking procedure. And under this procedure, if we receive no response, these electors will automatically be put on the list to be removed and they can check the list. And if they haven't received the letter or that they are out of town, then before the statutory deadline, that is the 25th of June, they could still apply for them to be put back on the register. Well, we have received, in fact, a lot of complaints about our work being too prudent. Let me supplement, Chairman. The member mentioned the judicial review case, whether this would affect the checking of data. I think this depends on the court's decision and we will. and we will certainly follow the court's decision. Dr. Sheng Sheng Tai. I refer to oh eight oh and oh eight one relating to electoral election. Just now, the, Mr. Yip asked about the V R and also removal of electors from the register. I do have a follow-up question. As per the established practice, in March for electoral elections, the electoral election should be gazetted in March. For the twenty sixteen election, the gazette took place on the fourth of March. And then some tendering arrangements for polling stations and counting stations, etc., should be gazetted on the eleventh of March. That's in twenty sixteen. For this year, however, and I stand to be corrected, I haven't read anything about gazette relating to electoral election and polling stations. According to the established practice, in mid-July, we should start the nomination period. Or for the V R cycle twenty twenty, we should start the period for inspecting the register. I don't know whether this is due to the epidemic. I don't know whether you've confirmed the gazette process or are you going to scrap the electoral election altogether? If that is the case, do tell us here. Secretary. Chairman, I thank Dr. Chang for giving me this opportunity to explain the situation. According to the law, date of the Legislative Council election will be gazetted. In previous terms, the date of gazette of the day of election would be around March. At the moment, we have not gazetted the day for electoral general elections because we are facing some unexpected circumstances. Under the outbreak of the disease, we are focusing our effort on fighting the epidemic, which has extensive impact on our society. We're therefore being very careful and monitoring the development of the epidemic, the impact on our society as a whole and the impact on public health. We need to conduct this comprehensive assessment before taking this legislative step. The E A C, the Electoral Affairs Commission, and the R E O, in spite of all these, have been actively preparing for the election. The effort is still ongoing. It also includes recruitment of electoral staff. We also need to set up over six hundred polling stations and implement other relevant electoral arrangements. Also, the consultation on the proposed guidelines on election activities and also voter's registration. Dr. Chang referred to the gazette of polling stations and counting stations. Usually, this will only be done one month before the election. So about the election date, we have not published in the gazette yet, but preparation is underway. And we're actively doing so. Secretary. Chairman, may I know from the secretary that, yes, we are affected by the epidemic, but do you have a timetable as to whether the electoral election should take place or not? Because there must be a reason why we gazette the election in March as per established practice. We're now in April. And this is the fundamental right enjoyed by everyone in Hong Kong. There is no reason why the government cannot disclose any concrete plans and timetables relating to the election. Secretary. Chairman, according to the Basic Law, the Legislative Council has a term of four years. This term will end at the thirtieth of September. Before the end of the term, the election should take place. And before the election, we need to have a nomination period, a period for electioneering activities. So on the whole, the election should take place in early September. But before that, we have the nominating procedures and electioneering activities. At the moment, we need to closely monitor and assess the impact brought about by the epidemic. Meanwhile, we also follow the schedule for holding the electoral election. We will keep it in view. And then we will assess the situation and take the step of gazette. Dr. Loai Kwok, five minutes. I refer to C M A B zero five five. My question relates to the development of the Guangdong-Hong Kong-Macau Greater Bay Area or the G B A. The response is quite positive. And I quite firmly believe that according to the outlined development plan for the G B A, the S A R government will continue to identify business opportunities for Hong Kong people and will also grasp the opportunities in terms of social and livelihood matters. In particular, there will be more business opportunities for young people. They'll be given more choices and more room for development. I have two follow-up questions. I know that the S A R government is liaising very closely with the Guangdong Provincial Government on the development of G B A. But at the same time, because of the epidemic, we have identified some flaws in the mechanism. For example, for Hong Kong people entering Guangdong Province, they will be isolated in the designated location. And that night, when this measure was announced, my friends who had to work on the mainland were very anxious. They rushed, they tried to rush to cross the border using the Hong Kong-Shanghai-Macau Bridge by six P M in order to reach the mainland. The other example is the Shenzhen Municipal Government requiring cross-border drivers to acquire a health certificate. Well, some adjustment was made to this measure subsequently, but it shows insufficient communication between the two governments. We understand that with the epidemic constantly evolving, there might be emergency measures. There should, however, be a good communication mechanism. Second, about the opportunities brought by the G B A. Now with a global economic recession on the horizon, it is even more important that we grasp the G B A opportunities. Of course, we need to be careful and focus our resources on fighting the epidemic. At the same time, we also need to plan for the future. Has the government planned as to how we should set up our efforts in facilitating the development of the G B A? For example, whether more construction companies will be able to take part in infrastructural projects in the Greater Bay Area? Secretary. Thank you, Dr. Lo, for your questions on the Greater Bay Area and communication with Guangdong Province. Under the current epidemic, let me explain our liaison with the mainland government and the Guangdong Provincial Government. We have not ceased our liaison and we are the lead bureau and together with other policy bureaus. We liaise with the Guangdong counterparts and Guangdong Provincial Government. We hold video conference meetings. And we also have mutual communication and coordinate on bilateral measures. However, we face certain constraints with the rapid development of the epidemic. Sometimes measures are rolled out in a very urgent manner, be it measures from the Hong Kong side or from the Guangdong side. That results in the example cited by Dr. Loai Kwok just now. For the cross-border drivers, we have been liaising with the Guangdong Provincial Government and the Shenzhen Municipal Government on the arrangement. For example, we should be exempted from isolation. And about health certificates, we are working out details because of the differences in our systems. And we are working on it. And before the measure is implemented, we will make an announcement. In terms of development of the Greater Bay Area, again, our work is ongoing. We'll continue to promote and implement the twenty-four policy measures. We will also liaise with the relevant sectors on striving for new measures and promoting new measures, including mutual recognition of the qualification of engineering professionals and also allowing construction companies to take up projects in the G B A.
Next, Mr. Hulun Chao, five minutes. Thank you, Chair. Two questions from me. First of all, C M A B zero one three. I ask this question. I would like to know that during the Black Riot, many people have been doxxed. In some cases, these subjects as well as their family members have their information disclosed. Police officers and their family members were doxxed. This is immoral and it is against the law. In the reply given to my question, it is said that one thousand seven hundred and ninety-three doxing complaints were received, among which six hundred and seventy-seven were found in suspected contravention of the personal data privacy ordinance and referred to the police for further criminal investigation. So six hundred and seventy-seven cases have been referred to the police for criminal investigation. What is the outcome? How many of them have been taken to court? Has the court cases been concluded? So please update us on the information. If you can take the matter to court, then you will fall within the portfolio of the law enforcement agencies. But what about cases not substantiated? Would it be because you are not able to identify the person involved? You don't know who committed the offense, etc.? But what about the police officers who have been doxxed or others, other victims who have been doxxed? Well, if the complaints cannot be substantiated and yet that person has already been doxxed online, so what measures have you got in place to safeguard the interests of such people? That's my first question. Second question. Now, for the C M A B, I think in the opening remarks of the secretary, you have said that you take it seriously when it comes to basic law, education, and national studies. As was the knowledge about the Constitution. Are you going to render some support to the Civil Service Bureau? Now, there are still inadequacies in such national education, etc. Had it been so, had it not been so, then the R T K report would not have, out of the blue, asked a question that breached the One China Policy as if she was trying to help Taiwan to become a country. Now, the R T K is a public corporation. Of course, you are not overseeing the Civil Service. But then the C M A B must play a role and you should support the C S B in making sure that the Civil Service would not do something which is a blatant disregard of common sense. Thank you, Mr. Chow, for your questions. First of all, for the complaints received by the Office of the Privacy Commissioner for Personal Data, seven hundred and seventy-seven complaints. I haven't got the detailed information. That's the number of cases referred by the Office of the P C P D to the police. Now, if there are victims of doxing, well, currently, under section sixty-four of the ordinance, there is this requirement. There is for the personal data privacy ordinance. It is said that if somebody suffers any damages or loss psychologically or financially, etc., it is pursuable. So there is a criminal liability and there is a penalty. Earlier on, we have discussed the matter with the Constitutional Affairs Panel. There is what should be done to tackle the problem of doxing incidents and what should be done to enhance the ordinance, whether we need new offenses so as to make it clearer and easier to have follow-up action. So for the legislative amendment work, it is ongoing and in due course, we are going to inform and consult the panel. And then for the promotion of the Constitution and the Basic Law, it is important. Under the C S, we have a steering committee to promote the Basic Law. Well, the C S B is represented on that committee. That is the Basic Law Promotion Steering Committee. We have also been helping out on this front. I agree that for the Constitution and Basic Law education and promotion, that has to be enhanced so that our public officers would better understand One Country, Two Systems and how that principle should be implemented. Ray Chen, five minutes. C M A B zero zero four. But before I actually follow on this question, I will also comment on the arrangements for the twenty twenty electoral election. So far, we haven't got any gazette notice. I can appreciate the difficulties and the consideration of the part of the bureau. But then that would have a bearing on the nomination period. So, Secretary, when would be the deadline for you to make announcements and get such the notice? And then, please also tell us that against the background of an outbreak, how the election is to be sort of carried out? Now, we have the prevention and control of infectious diseases ordinance. There are people who are put under quarantine orders. So how are we going to conduct an election? Of course, I hope that by then, everything would be fine and we have come out of the crisis. And bear in mind that with the prohibition of group dating regulation as well. Now, let me come back to my question. And that's about eliminating discrimination against sexual minorities. Well, I think the Advisory Group on Eliminating Discrimination Against Sexual Minorities has come up with a report with many recommendations. But then that report was submitted to the government in December twenty fifteen. Let's take a look of the list. There is this charter on non-discrimination of sexual minorities. Well, back in twenty seventeen, it was said that it would be completed in twenty seventeen, but we are already in April twenty twenty. But then what is said here is that after the work has been completed, we'll invite organizations to subscribe to the charter. So does it mean that you haven't completed the work? In other words, you were not serious in giving the undertaking that it will be completed in twenty seventeen for training. Yes, I know you have trained the healthcare workers so that they are more sensitive to the needs of the sexual minorities. As to the next step, you're going to provide training resources to social workers. In the past, you put together teaching materials for healthcare workers. You did get input from the sexual minorities. I hope you would do the same for the social workers. And then for the disciplinary services, again, we are told that you are going to make sure that they will be more respectful and more sensitive to the sexual minorities. That is, you won't call a person who is a target if a sexual minority has been arrested. So please tell us about the progress and when you would truly respect the sexual minorities. And then for the legislative work to eliminate discrimination against sexual minorities. Now, it is said that you are working on the draft. When are you going to finalize the draft? When are we going to get it? Are we going to get the finalized version before the end of the current term? P S. First of all, let me answer the question between the date of election and the date of gazette notice. Currently, we haven't got a specific provision. Currently, we haven't got a specific provision about the date of get settled. But then, we have got this four-year term in the Basic Law. In other words, under section six bracket two of the electoral ordinance, the latest that we hold electoral election would be no later than the twenty-ninth of September. This is because the election must take place ten to sixty days before the commencement of term. In other words, it should be the sixteenth of September. And then there is also EAC regulation saying that the nomination period will last for two to three weeks. And then the election would take place within four to six weeks of the deadline of the nomination. So it could start nine weeks before the sixteenth of September. We haven't made up our mind, as the Secretary has said, we are being affected by the epidemic. Let me answer the second part of the question. And that's about the elimination of discrimination against sexual minorities. I think Mr. Ray Chen knows full well that we have been following up on the report of the Advisory Group. We've been taking it forward with the practical quota practices and we have trained the healthcare workers. We are moving on to the social workers and we are preparing resources for the disciplinary services. And we'll look at the administrative measures and legislative measures. For the charter, well, in fact, we are commencing the work. So all things are being done in tandem. In any event, we'll keep up a dialogue with the stakeholders. And thirdly, as a result of the epidemic, indeed, even if we tried to finish some work earlier, we weren't able to do so. Sorry, speaker is off mic. Chairman, Mr. Chen, what is important is that after we have put together the draft, we won't wait for it to be published. We will talk to you, Mr. Chen, and other stakeholders. What is important is to check what should be done to eliminate discrimination. Thank you. Ms. Lee, five minutes. CMAB zero zero nine. And that's about the study on electronic counting of votes, a question asked by Mr. Horace Chang. We want to have fair and open elections. I think it is obvious that we should go for electronic counting. But then you said that you have got over six hundred stations and then it would not be cost-effective to have electronic devices at all these six hundred polling and counting stations. So are you going to implement that? And then for the second part of my question, we did ask for it many times and you have made a promise. That is, for the functional constituency, you are able to introduce electronic counting and it will be done for the September electoral election. But then in your answer, you're now saying that you are not ready to do so for the election that took place recently, that is, the district council election on the twenty-fourth of November last year. We need to find a way that would be convincing in the eyes of many people. Now, can we not use our fingerprint and ID card to get a ballot paper to prevent repeated queuing up and the repeat issuing of ballot papers? Now, for electronic counting, could you simply dismiss it just because of the dollar sign, saying that it's not cost-effective? Time is running out before the election in September. Are you going to revisit the topic and study the feasibility of electronic counting as well of votes as well as the electronic issuing of ballot papers? That is, we just use our ID card and a fingerprint to get a ballot paper issued to us. It would save a lot of trouble. Another part of my question is also about the election. For the last election on the twenty-fourth of November, I always say that it is important to have fair and open elections throughout, in particular on the polling day. I think nobody should be put in fear. Electioneering staff, candidates and voters should be free from fear. But then, we were told that citizens were worried that they would be doxxed if they expressed a political preference. They were afraid that they would be beaten up. And not to mention candidates, we've always been sort of threatened. So for the upcoming election, other than the epidemic, are you going to address the problem of the threat of violence so that everybody will be free from fear in standing as a candidate and casting their vote?
Secretary, thank you, Ms. Lee, for the questions. First, regarding electoral arrangements and digitizing the process, this is something close to our heart and this is something that we have been working on. After this administration assumes office, myself and my colleagues have been striving for greater efficiency in electoral arrangements to ensure accuracy and impartiality by adopting electronic means. And we have been discussing members at the panel meetings, first about electronic counting. It is of utmost importance to have impartiality and accuracy in any public election. When we have a large number of votes, if we have a centralized electronic counting of votes, it would be more efficient. At the moment, this is done manually. It takes a long time whilst it is accurate. However, as I mentioned just now, we are looking into electronic counting. At the moment, this is done at individual stations. And it will not be cost-effective if we have electronic counting in different stations instead of a centralized manner. We will introduce a pilot in some traditional functional constituencies with more electors. You haven't answered me the question on distributing ballot papers electronically. Yes, on this matter, it is also on our agenda. We are also looking into distributing ballot papers electronically. Preparation is underway. For this term's electoral election, well, electronic ballot papers may sound quite simple, but we also need to ensure it is safe and free of risks in terms of all arrangements. So we do have difficulties in implementing it in time. Next, in terms of your other question, Chairman, I do agree that we should not be violent in any election. We should be peaceful and there should be opportunities for candidates to stage their platform and express their views. So vandalizing offices and damaging public properties do have an effect. And the EAC has also looked into the matter. In the upcoming election, of course, we appeal to everyone to be peaceful and nonviolent and to uphold the culture of a peaceful and nonviolent election. Should this behaviour persist? Of course, law enforcement action should be taken. And one should not resort to unlawful means in order to achieve the purpose. I believe that we are unanimous on this. It is unacceptable. Mr. Eddie Chu, five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. I have three questions. First, reply number CMAB oh one one about promoting public awareness and understanding of the Basic Law. I heard Mr. Hulun Chow ask a similar question. A recent hot topic is about an RTHK reporter interviewing the Director General of the WHO. Mr. Edward Yao, the Secretary for Commerce, Economic Development, commented later that the reporter is against the One China Policy. The RTHK's official response is that this program and the reporter's question is neutral and this is not against the One China Policy. Today, Carrie Lam further chimed in with Mr. Edward Yao's comment. It's really perplexing. Very often, these principal officials would answer in a manner as if to imply that everyone should know it as well and there is no need to explain further. But the CMAB should be the lead bureau in promoting the understanding of the Basic Law. So perhaps the Secretary should give us a clear account. The reporter asked. How did this question contravene the principle of One China? That's the first question. Second question, CMAB oh one five, about Article twenty-two of the Basic Law and its implementation in Hong Kong and also the three institutions set up by the central government in Hong Kong as they are. Eight days ago last week, the PLA, one of the helicopters of the PLA had an accident in Thailand Country Park eight days ago. But there is no provision in the Basic Law for the Garrison or the Garrison Law to make announcement as to any accident and the casualties. It's been eight days and we have no idea whether there are injuries, casualties involving what personnel. If on the next occasion, the helicopter didn't hit a tree in a country park but rather a residential building, can they just continue to keep us in the dark? Can they just dispatch PLA troops to clear the scene and pretend nothing is going on? What if another accident happens that threatens public security or public safety? What will be the rule in disclosure of information? Third question. In mid-March, Reuters claimed that some four thousand armed police from the mainland came to Hong Kong to monitor the work of frontline police officers in the anti-extradition movement, bail movement. The government already displayed the claim. But if four thousand armed forces from the mainland came to observe the work of the police in the anti-extradition bail movement, does it contravene the Article twenty-two of the Basic Law? Mr. Chu asked three questions. First, about the RTHK reporter putting a question to an official of the WHO in an interview. I believe there are two points stemming from the question. First, about the membership of a state of the WHO, and this is very clear. A member state of the WHO should be a sovereign state. So under the One China Policy, this will be dealt with according to the One China Policy. Second, about the RTHK reporter's conduct, whether it conflicts with the role of RTHK as a public broadcaster or as a government department. This will be governed under the relevant provisions binding RTHK as a public broadcaster or government department. I believe there is an established mechanism to deal with the matter. Next, about Article twenty-two of the Basic Law, there are three institutions set up in Hong Kong by the central government. These institutions observe the laws of Hong Kong. It also observes the Garrison Law. Regarding the recent incident, if I remember correctly, the Hong Kong government made an announcement that no Hong Kong peoples suffer injury in the incident. And about the Reuters point, at the moment, we are unclear about the truth of the piece of information. So more importantly, the government should clarify and dispel rumours. And more importantly, we need to uphold the Basic Law. Do you still have time to answer another question from Dr. Junius Ho? Five minutes. I thought I didn't have the chance, Secretary. I refer you to CMAB oh two four. Now, I've read your reply. I'm sorry. It should be oh two three, CMAB oh two three, about promotion of the Basic Law. Fifty million dollars as expenditure and it will be promoted in primary and secondary schools. And I'm reading from your reply. It's really old-fashioned. You talked about the preparation of short clips, video clips and also seminars. I don't think this will instill, this will really cultivate an interest in our young people. I think you need to adopt new thinking and get in touch with them and explain to them the fundamental concepts and theories enshrined in the Basic Law. I think we need to compare and contrast. We should compare ourselves in Singapore. This is the best example we can find. Three weeks ago, the Heritage Foundation of the United States dethroned us. In the chart of the freest economy in the world, we now rank only the second, whereas Singapore now tops the chart. So let's make a comparison. We are not the freest economy, but comparing to Singapore, they have the death penalty and also the corporal punishment. And they also have regulations over fake news. And if you discuss politics without approval in a public place, you can be detained. These are really harsh rules. And you can receive a corporal punishment, eight or ten, or you can be spanked eight to ten times. And they are still regarded as the freest economy in the world. What it shows us is that you need to have rules and regulations to enjoy freedom. Freedom is not absolute. It comes with limitations as well. So you should not just cite Article twenty-three all the time. You need to adopt innovative and new thinking. I think this answer is really old-fashioned. I can't help doing off reading your reply. Okay, and next question, on the fourth of April, it will be the thirtieth anniversary of the promulgation of the Basic Law. And my question is on Article twenty-three. And we have the constitutional duty to legislate for Article twenty-three of the Basic Law. It's just like I have parental responsibility over my child. If I haven't provided for my child since my child is five, I haven't been providing him with education, I haven't taken up any responsibility at all. And then when my child is eighteen and twenty-five, I only repeat that I have parental responsibility, but then I have not fulfilled my responsibility at all, then what's wrong with, what's the problem? My question simply is, when are you going to legislate for Article twenty-three of the Basic Law? About promoting the Constitution and the Basic Law, I agree with Dr. Junius Ho that it is not sufficient to adhere to what we have listed here. Now, it's about the content, the channel and the means of promoting the Basic Law. I think content is the most important point, especially under the present circumstances. With the principle of One Country, Two Systems and Hong Kong being the Hong Kong Special Administrative Region and its relationship with the mainland and all the duties and obligations and rights, these are the major points and we need to focus on these. We need to adopt multiple channels to promote the Basic Law and there should be different means, especially for young people born after nineteen ninety-seven. They have not gone through the era of drafting the Basic Law and drafting the policy objectives. We therefore have prepared an animated series to boost their understanding. And about the Heritage Foundation's latest report, although we ranked the second, if we take a look at the details, it has to do with the impacts brought about by the it has to do with the impacts brought about by the recent social incidents hampering investment sentiment. However, they do acknowledge our fundamental values. So, I believe if we could restore calm in society, we could give play to our competitive edge. And I believe that we will continue to be a free economy. About Article twenty-three of the basic law, indeed, we have the constitutional duty. We need to perform this duty and the Hong Kong SAR government is required to fulfill this responsibility. It is controversial, but we should not shun the issue. Just like the National Anthem Law, again, we also have the constitutional duty to enact legislation. There have been seventeen meetings with fifty, over fifty hours of discussion at the LECO. The work has been completed. This is pending, second resumption of second reading and third reading. And I also appeal to LECO members to fulfill their duties. In light of the local situation and the local legislation, the National Anthem Bill can be passed. Just like how we carry out our other constitutional duties. Thank you for attending this meeting. We resume at two.